All right, it is August 21st, 2024, it's five o'clock here in Wood Creek, Texas. I am calling the special meeting of the Wood Creek City Council in the session to have a budget workshop. I'm asking that we all, um, no, we're not, I just called it to order, please call and roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Jeff Rex, mayor, mayor for 10 of our minds here, council member Laniya Bailey, here. Council member Chris Grummer, here. Council member Bob Hammer, here. Council member Krista Richardson, here. Thank you, you have a form.
Thank you, we're here, any comments?
No.
No, sir.
Seeing the regular agenda of the first order of business, go into a workshop and discuss the 24, 25 fiscal year. The city Wood Creek in the proposal annual operating budget, I have five or seven. We're in workshop. So we have a copy of the budget, the proposed budget in front of us. There are some notes, we will be making changes as we go, does anyone like to, would anyone like to start? Any additional corrections, changes?
Yeah, mayor, if you don't mind, I can just chime in a little bit on what my involvement has been with Jim and kind of then let you guys pick up from there.
Please.
Yeah, so, so Jim and I were able to get this budget and I know a number of council worked on getting these numbers together and putting this budget together. Jim and I had a chance to, to look at all these numbers and really felt like it was a good starting point for the budget. I'll let Jim do, you know, a lot of the talking, but we, we went through and, and I know Jim will have some recommendations and, and council has some recommendations as well. So what our hopes for this meeting are is that we can, you know, get anything that is a, a high level change that needs to be made. I know you guys have had, you know, several budget discussions in, in leading up to this. But also Jim and I have been talking about, you know, working on getting our actual numbers for the current fiscal year. We had a good meeting with Fund View on Monday and, and we have a plan going forward to try to get those numbers more accurately reflecting exactly where the city's current financial position is. And I'm hopeful that, you know, as we continue on in the next couple of weeks, we can get a, a good budget that is also shared on the, the same document as what is proposed. For, for council to eventually approve as, as the final approved budget. But certainly I've enjoyed working with Jim and I'll kind of let him take the lead on some of the things we've been working on, but available to answer any of your questions as we go through this meeting.
Ms. Burton, okay, just we get started with the, the expenses just going down the list in order. Notes that I made to see hall maintenance repair. We got supposed 15,000.
Can you give us a line back? Eighty-three.
I'm looking at my credit bill, sorry. You know, line eighty-three, correct? Just clarification as to kind of what expectations are. Because fifteen thousand, that's pretty much going to get us some new flooring and paint. I didn't know if there was anything else in that, that, in that project that we might want to add to or subtract from or so.
I think we were talking about the lights.
Right.
Uh, flooring, paint. We discussed potentially considering a wall change without knowing what that would cost. It's kind of hard to anticipate that. I know you were saying that maybe it's going to be more expensive than, than ten grand or so that's.
Right. What we got for fifteen thousand, just I haven't seen anything. I've never done a whole lot of research, just from my experience. To paint the walls, touch up drywall, maybe replace some of the light abilities and replace this carpet. We're going to use that fifty thousand threshold. And I just want to make sure that was the scope that was thought, you know, as far as blowing out the wall and doing major reconstruction, we're going to have to. We need to discuss a plan and raise that up.
And then that number also has to cover basic maintenance and repair too, so we're not even allocating enough for that. I did have one question and I, I don't know the appropriate order for this, but because the first item you jumped into is relevant to what I'm talking about. We were provided a bunch of T M L budget training workshops, videos that we could watch at our leisure. Right? In watching one of those, I learned that it would be potentially important for us to consider moving all capital improvement projects are all one-time expenditures. Down out of our regular budget. Now, maybe Mike could speak to this more accurately, but what I, why this is a reference to this item is because based on that learning, I believe that this should only reflect, reflect basic maintenance and repair. As anticipated for like those like incidentals, you know, that come up every year and that if we were planning a large. Project or improvement project, that we should potentially put that outside of our budget and down in the capital improvement.
Would you have fifteen thousand in capital approval for city hall renovation?
Yeah, so. That's where it should be. And so what is this number then? Is that just we are anticipating that in addition?
I'm not sure, I wasn't here for that, I shouldn't have given to that number, so why bring it up today to ask?
Yeah.
Okay, this, this section should be expenses, which are annual, the revenue expense that finished in this year. But a capital improvement will last more than one year. So this really should only pertain to, you know, what we anticipate every year. So it's correct, it should be moved capital improvements and a different number properly for day-to-day maintenance.
So we would reduce this number, let's say we go back to the eight thousand, let's say. There are already fifteen thousand set aside in capital improvements, but just probably duplicated effort here. You know, so we could just sort of make that twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand, whatever we think it's going to take. Take this number back down to what would be spent for actual maintenance through the year. And not, and not carpeting or lighting, which is long-term.
I would agree with that. So in reference to changing this number, Jim, do you feel like you have appropriate guidance there?
Right.
So this, this number would go back to like eight grand or?
Just for this year, now taking into account that it, our balance right now includes the lightning strike, which we haven't got insurance, but all that stuff done. We're just two hundred dollars over budget, something eight thousand dollar budget right now, so eight thousand probably in line.
Do you, do you want to do that?
If you want, I can do it, I'll do it, okay.
And then we need to change that note. Remove it potentially.
Right.
Then I could go down in the bottom and then if we scroll down to the bottom, we're potentially looking at increasing this number now, following your discussion.
Let's put it in for now. So we did that, if we did that, are, are we just starting that to come back to, but we may decide that that number needs to be?
Where is the lightning strike expense reflected?
Right now, it's in the city maintenance, their city hall maintenance.
Does it show up in this revenue expense report?
Well, some of it has, some of it we paid out, we've got the.
Invoic back, yeah.
We got some, we haven't got all of them back, we got some of them back.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, but you're estimating it's about eight thousand two hundred?
Well, right now, we're at eight thousand two hundred and that actually includes the handrails that are happening right now. So, but as far as the lightning strike, we're. We're just a few hundred dollars at this point, we haven't gotten all invoices back, hot IT's not done yet. The cameras. And some of those, some of those issues, we have not got, we have, from hot IT, we don't have. Full invoicing back, we've got some quotes for sure, we have not spent that money.
Is it working for us?
It's working for us. But we will follow, follow insurance.
So it's not on the expense report yet?
No, no.
Okay, so we need to actually lower it down to eight thousand dollars. And looking at, when we get down to the cap, down to the bottom of this spreadsheet, we're going to have a project, we can discuss. The. Carcass. Next note is on eighty-nine IT and radio expenses.
That's, I mean, that's kind of the same thing again, that should be a capital expense, a one-time expense. It's not part of our regular billing. This should be related to our regular billing items. So whatever we anticipated, the one-time purchase of the handheld radios, it should go down at the bottom.
What's the expected line? How long do these last?
We hasn't had the ones we have now for ten years.
Right, ten years, yeah.
I don't know, it was before my time. Before April time. Do you remember any of that? Mayor Whitehead?
Sorry.
Do you remember the LCRA radios, when they were originally purchased with it during your tenure?
Absolutely not.
It may have been through mine. So I know it's been a while. Yeah. But I mean, because, but they're, they said they're obsolete, I mean, they, they don't replace them anymore, it's time to upgrade them. Hasn't been time to upgrade them for a while, like we couldn't communicate with Wimberly during the eclipse. They were, they were, we could communicate with each other, not, not like with Wimberly. So Jim, on this line, what, what was the expenses like for this last year? Was the five thousand dollars adequate?
In my last order.
I'm going to look up what the, we estimated the radio on the resume, look at that, there you go.
I see, I see radio expenses added five thousand dollar budget this year.
Yeah.
We spent a thousand of it, I'm not sure on what.
Fifteen sixty is on.
In your email, there's a cost of the radio.
I don't think radio is wrong, about that piece.
I don't know, but in your emails, the cost of the radios is what we used. So if you look in your email or in that budget file, the shared budget file is there too.
So in June, we spent four eighty for the lower river, for Colorado River authority?
Yeah.
Was that, that was just for. In this question, wasn't that just for the subscription or the service?
Remember you dumped that radio document in there?
Okay, I'm sorry, I misspoke. The, the original has sent for two radios is fifty-three ninety-four.
So fifty-five hundred of that needs to go below. And this would be knocked to forty-five hundred or?
Well, last year we only spent a thousand twenty. Year-to-date expense in that category, that might be high.
Okay, so do you have a proposal, two grand, sound good? Sounds like we haven't gotten over that in the last little bit, so. And then down below, we need fifty-five hundred. I'll put it down below. Let me put it right here for now, because I gotta mess up all those formulas. Actually, let me just.
So we're taking that from ten thousand to two thousand?
That should be good.
Next notice is ninety-one nine nine six with arborist.
Those are just our notes from the last meeting.
So I have a question then, since we're right at ninety. Is the basic annual subscription for the wood ton, it's four thousand seven hundred? And then Fund View, that's the subscription rate?
Yes.
I'm just checking that the formulas are still good. That, you know, something else, okay. Hey, Jim had a whole bunch of.
Well.
We just interjected in the middle here.
No, that's fine. Question, clarification, ninety-seven for the arborist and then. One eighteen for oak wilt containment. Does it make sense to keep them split out? I'm not sure why they're split out in the first place, but it's all.
Because the arborist is just going to be for the hourly wages that we're paying, we can hire just a city arborist per line. And that line was specifically for that. And then the oak wilt containment was for whatever treatment option we needed to do to contain oak wilt.
Right. So my understanding, we're not going to hire employee, correct? Or should put out the R P or the oak wilt?
Yeah.
Yeah, so my problem, combined as a one.
Some, some arborists are oak wilt certified.
Right.
So say the person that hired isn't necessarily able to survive and would have an oak wilt certain bad persons would administer the treatments.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Sorry, I can add, ideally that's happening in this budget year, the oak wilt guy.
Right.
Or girl, right? So that's also why it's not in next year's. The oak wilt specialists, that, that is literally just for us to hire an arborist. Through the city and to have a budget to be able to pay them as a contracted employer. And then the oak wilt containment, as council member Richardson discussed, is for any acting on oak wilt specialists. Report, but that report ideally should be coming in this fiscal year.
Okay.
And we've had an oak wilt containment item repetitively for many years now. And we've actually even got a program that references it for residents to apply for it and be able to like try to assist with oak wilt containment on their properties. Too, so.
Okay, so we're good with what we mentioned.
I know, I mean, so this is one of those items that if we're talking about like a one-time expenditure, a one-time plan for the city to like deal with massive oak wilt containment. That would potentially be down below. And then if we talked about an annual oak wilt containment plan, that would be in here.
I thought this fund was, like I actually said, if citizens commonly have any containment, so the containment, right?
Yeah.
It's a small purpose.
It serves dual purpose right now. So that's why I'm arguing or potentially presenting the point that anytime we're intending a single, a single project to occur in a year. Or I know some of the capital improvements might take more than two years, like it's a road or whatever, right? But if it's a one-time deal, we're really not supposed to put it in this area. It's supposed to be below.
Arborist thing, so we hire an arborist, they come in and say, you need to trench that area and it's going to cost fifty thousand dollars. You know, the fifty thousand dollars goes down below, because it's, it's going to happen and then we don't do it. It's not, it would be a capital project.
And this eighteen thousand sounds much more like an annual thing. If we had a serious problem, it definitely would cover, this does seem like an expense item.
The arborist is a repetitive item, is a contracted employer.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's some, there's some argument that you could say, okay, we're going to put the eighteen thousand dollars worth of arborist in with the containment plan and put it all into one big item, but there's no real need to. I mean, we want to, we want to pay the contractor from this line item, we want to handle what he or she may tell us to do to contain the oak wilt in the other areas. So I think it's fine with it.
What I'm, what I'm arguing or what I'm presenting is, and our oak wilt containment annual plan would be one of them. If we are planning a large oak wilt project for next year, that should not be in this and it should be listed down below as a capital improvement project. Or as like a project. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, because that's also part of what throws off our finances every year when we're looking at them, because we'll have big one-time expenditures in there. So when we're trying to plan in the future, we're like, well, why did it jump this one year? So that this record keeping of keeping them separate will help every year our budget be more clear. It also increases transparency for the taxpayers, because they can see specifically what we're programs we're running versus these one-offs we're planning to do. And the way it impacts is how you, you raise your tax rate is different, if that makes sense. Like this budget, this, this larger, and maybe my pitch I'm in toxic, explain this better. But this larger budget right here, this is what sets our tax rate, right? And wherever we end up right here, we're ideally supposed to be zero-zero, sometimes we transfer from reserves, right? This over here isn't really supposed to be setting our tax rate. Does that make sense? So that's why you keep them different.
No, I would spend that, yeah.
Two.
I'm just saying that eighteen should stay here.
The arborist, eighteen, I'm asking if on oak wilt containment, it would be more relevant for us to separate out. What do we plan to spend on this annually as an annual oak wilt containment program for the city? Right, that even residents can access technically? And what of this are we hoping or anticipating to put towards a one-off?
But should we finish the revenue sections and then do our capital improvements all under one set of decisions?
Well, my, my understanding of the thirty thousand of oak wilt containment was that it was ongoing this year, that it wasn't, okay, well, we're going to, this is like, this stuff pops up, you deal with it. Something else pops up, you, you deal with it and it's expensive to do that work.
Yeah.
You know, and so, you know, that, that there could be something under oak wilt containment on the capital side that is like, okay, so. If it's a trenching thing, something like that. But my understanding of this was that, I mean, we've got so much work to do, you know, we could very easily spend this thirty thousand dollars in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, so two things to help maybe get this across, okay. So right now, a resident can apply for oak wilt containment and our program says they get a portion of whatever is in the budget. Right, I think it's like one-fourth or something.
There's.
So right now, if somebody immediately applies, they could grab quite a bit of money, right? So when we set that program up, I think there was like ten grand in that budget line item. So right now, first off, residents have access to a portion of this. Because of the way it's structured. The second component being, what I was talking about with setting the tax rate, is that we can't overtax citizens for things that might not happen.
Right.
So that's why all of those, those one-offs, those improvement projects are supposed to be down below, because the, if we're telling the taxpayers, we need to tax you this much, because we need this much money to run the city. And then we're consistently not spending that, or we don't follow through on that item. Then we have overtaxed residents without justification. Does that make sense? That's what was in the training, why it's so important is to pick the two apart.
So.
I'm recommending we set, this is the oak wilt containment program for our residents. This is the, the one that's in there every year and the city can also use it as needed for, for city purposes. And I'm recommending out of respect for the tree board, that we put into the capital, the lower amount, an actual oak wilt containment plan. Intended for the tree, that project specifically. Does that make sense? Do you feel like that still honors the intention they were going for?
So the one-one-eight line, we refer to.
We leave oak wilt containment there, we even maybe add a note that this is the residential oak wilt containment program and contributes for city needs as needed. Like for example, if this tree out here started showing signs of oak wilt, the city could still take oak wilt containment money and deal with it. That would reduce the amount the residents have access to. So, but the, the way the resident program is structured is they just get a portion of whatever's still available.
So we need to look at that. Would we reduce, are you suggesting reducing this number, the thirty thousand?
No. I think this oak wilt containment program could probably be reduced.
So like ten and then move to.
And then understanding that we would plan for a large containment project down here.
Is ten hundred, remember you were?
No, I mean, we were talking about thirty grand up here, so.
No, I meant that one line, one-on-eight.
The expense.
What, we had fifteen thousand last year, because we really wanted to beef up addressing this and we did nothing. I think we were even supposed to have a program going on in Stone House, but Kevin never did it. So what it was before, I think, was ten grand. I'm, I'm okay with that amount. I mean, I also believe that we should probably be.
Be more aggressive maybe this year. I would be comfortable with using last year's number of fifteen.
Yeah.
At one-one-eight and then creating a new oak wilt containment outside of that. Yeah, year-to-date, we spent sixty-eight hundred dollars.
On oak wilt containment?
The oak wilt containment, of the fifteen thousand.
A foot or two or one?
Well, I'm just saying, it's.
Somebody's putting some money on something.
Somebody put some money and put it into the oak wilt. I mean, if you really want to get into the details of what it was spent on there, we could do that.
Everything, yeah. But notice our note here, we also said we're pending the oak wilt specialist consult.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we were even thinking about increasing it beyond that.
Yeah.
So did y'all, what, what number feels good?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Whoop.
Help with that. I don't have it all. Why is it, wouldn't we get an area? Okay.
Do you want to remove that red?
I will, yeah. I'm tidying this one up, project, what amount?
First of all, I think this has done most research on this topic.
For the capital improvement section?
For oak wilt. Were you expecting when you were, you don't have to rehearse, but when we talked about it, was the thirty thousand the number that you felt like that that would help?
I think so, but that's also just pure speculation, because we haven't got it.
Yeah, we haven't got any.
So just looking at the numbers of how much it does cost for the different events, I think that'd be.
So would we recreate it down there as thirty?
Okay.
What line did we put the fifteen?
That one-one. Go back to Jim.
And, and yeah, I have one other item, but um, we, we just worked through your list, I think.
Well, mainly it's following your red, red notes.
Do you, you wanna talk about the municipal grant?
Oh, I have the, while we're, while we're up there.
What about one-on-seven?
Oh. That's a reminder.
So, this is tricky.
Forensic, that's a misnomer, I think. And I could like to talk to that.
He called it an in-depth, yeah, it's not. Uh, an audit, I believe, that he recommended is the word, include audit, in-depth audit, right? Think, is that the word you used?
Cuz we've got audit in two places.
Well, I think on this one, Mike and I were talking about that would be.
On goal.
Rather than an audit, it would be a monthly.
Yeah.
Uh, we get a CPA or somebody that could verify monthly books and doing, um.
Yes, but we also talked about a one-time, larger audit right now while we're transitioning.
Right.
So that's why it had, it says, but, it says include in-depth audit possibilities, but quarterly reviews. So you're saying it's, it's moving to monthly reviews is the recommendation in addition to the one-off?
Well, I don't know that we need the one-off. Mike, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I, I would, I would, I think in our original discussions, since you guys have an auditor coming through every year and, and you guys are getting your numbers audited, I don't feel like it's necessary to expand on a one-time audit. I really feel like the, the monthly CPA coming in that will do your bank reconciliations and journal entries will put you on par with what, you know, pretty much every city, uh, similar size is doing. Um, those, that, that person, we, we talked a little bit about that with FunView. Uh, that person will be able to come in and make sure that your, your accounts or codes are entered correctly when you guys are entering revenue and expenditures and really get you back on track. Uh, when you guys have the auditor that you're gonna already pay money to come in for your, your twenty-three, twenty-four audit, they should be going through all of those things. And what, what I recommended was, we don't have time to, uh, to switch the auditors out this, this fiscal year. Um, but as you enter into February, I would recommend that the city reach out and get a new auditing firm. Um, typically, you wanna change auditors every three years and it's not even that they're doing a poor job. It's just industry standard to have different auditing firms look at your, your numbers to make sure that they are seeing any weaknesses, that they're, they're making sure that you guys are, have the best policies implemented. Um, and so I think, yeah, I don't feel like you, you, you're not off-budget enough to where, you know, we're, we're looking in and trying to find a bunch of money somewhere. Uh, so a one-time audit, I don't, I feel would be unnecessary, but a long-term CPA on a monthly basis would be extremely helpful for your staff and council, making sure that your numbers are on point every month.
And what is the cost you would anticipate? Cuz this, this included both, so we need to track it down.
Yeah, I would anticipate somewhere in the round, uh, the realm of about a thousand dollars a month for an, an independent CPA to come in and, uh, you know, audit your books. Wimberly has a, a company that they currently use, uh, to do that. When we set up FunView a couple of years ago, um, they, we, we hired an external auditor to come in and do those same things we're talking about. But, uh, that, that's pretty typical throughout the state of Texas. Uh, so I would budget, you know, somewhere in the area of a thousand dollars. Um, I can get Jim the number for the company Wimberly uses and I also have another, uh, firm that you guys can get a couple of quotes from and, and kinda take and, and see that. But I'd anticipate in the area of a thousand dollars a month.
So we'll change one-on-seven number from thirty to twelve.
We don't have an annual, the annual audit's up above.
Yeah, fourteen.
Up on the thing. And then we don't have an annual accountant anymore, so he, they're recommending reinstating that. So we're thinking twelve, should we just bump it to like fourteen to be safe?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think.
And then why not?
Now it's a little late. I would say fifteen thousand.
Fifteen?
Yes.
That was the number that I had, yeah.
Right.
And then maybe specifically put, you know, CPA monthly, a monthly CPA.
Monthly accounting firm.
And I like it too, cuz it gives us sort of an objective third party and a little, a little separation on the, you know, the former city manager just wanted to do it all and give it all, you know, under discontrol. And what we had before was in that, I mean, working with the pain and having them do the, the, there were some things that it's easier for us to do in-house that they weren't doing. But as far as being able to, you know, get things, you know, meshing up the code and just like, just that other set of eyes that is um, that is removed from the city, right?
Complex entry.
Yeah.
Well, and right now, we already kind of have the independent third-party person in there because Mike's here now. Looking at all the accounts. It's not just the council member and, you know, Jeff and staff. We've actually got a highly trained professional back on the job too, not to not bear a company degree. I'm just saying like a third party, he's not counsel, you know?
Oh, no.
So, I, yeah, so it kind of does satisfy that concern that I had about, um, the status of the coding in our, in our books and how we spent six thousand dollars in oak well and nobody, nobody, what is that?
Well, we, um, yeah, we, we stepped in and, and helped out in a lot of different ways, um, after, after Mr. Rule left. And, um, and now we've got, we've got the, you know, we're clicking along pretty well and with Mike's help.
But Mike is kind of expensive.
We need to get counsel out of.
Or an accountant.
Accounting business.
And Mayor, if you don't mind, by speaking a little bit to kind of one of the reasons that you guys are running into so many problems with your, your, your FunView accounting is when, when it was implemented, um, you guys have, I think, around four hundred individual line items uh, for your city budget, which is on par with a city of about fifty thousand. Um, you, we, we really, what we're trying to do, uh, is Jim and I are gonna be working together with FunView and narrow, narrowing those, those budget items down significantly to where they're easier to track and they're easier for your staff to implement. They're, they're easier to understand where money is coming in and going out of. Um, and so, you know, that's kind of what our project is, is that to really, you know, take that huge number of accounts that were created. If you were, you know, uh, let's say, um, San Marcos and bringing that down to, you know, the, the things where the account codes that you just need. And then your staff can really be able to track that. It'll make it easier for your citizens and council to track as well. Um, and so that's kind of where our process is and, and I'm, I'm excited, you know, for that in the future.
Well, bless you for that.
Yes.
Good to hear. Yeah, we actually tried to pare it down a little bit when, when, um, after Brent Lewis left, you know, got with the pain and we tried to pare it down. Tried to consolidate some of the account numbers and, you know, get, get straightened out. And we did make some progress on that and then, and then it, you know, blew up and, you know, but then, we get cleaned up.
All right.
Well, if we have a, is your hand still up, Mike, or is it over this or?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Your hands, like your digital hand is raised. Is that still?
Oh, I'll lower it. I'm sorry. It was, it was when we were talking before. I'm good. Sorry about that.
All right, I have one other item I was gonna bring up today that I learned in that training and it has to do with grant matches. So as altruistic as, uh, this is, and this is a question I had for Mike and I, I kind of alerted him that I have this question. I don't know if you've been able to follow up. But I learned that it is more appropriate to apply for the grant, hit the grant and do a budget amendment than it is to anticipate and, and plan for the grant. So it's really good that we already moved it down into capital improvements up under the main budget. But I, I do believe that I don't think we can budget for grant matches anymore.
Yeah, I, I, what, what, my, uh, suggestion would be on that is if you have a grant that you know you're going to be applying for, um, and if you guys have a company, say that you've identified and you wanna go for a specific grant, um, it does give you additional scoring if that item is already budgeted in your budget. And so if you, if you say, hey, we want to, you know, apply for a tree grant, we know this is gonna be happening this, next year. The match is going to be twenty-five thousand dollars and you guys put that in your capital projects budget. Um, there is positive scoring for that as opposed to you guys having to do a budget amendment. Um, you may still be able to get the grant, but it, it may hurt you if it's a very competitive grant. If it's a deal where you, you think you're gonna go for a grant, you're not really positive that your city's gonna be going for it and, you know, council is, is sort of divided and you kinda wanna see how it goes, then I would recommend just doing the budget amendments, uh, on that, so it's not tying up a, a bunch of your revenue um, for, for further actions throughout the year. Um, on the happenstance that you put money in your capital improvements and, and you decide not to go for the grant or it's not awarded, um, as soon as you know that that's the case, I would recommend, you know, doing a budget amendment and moving that air, that money to another appropriate area in your budget. Uh, so it doesn't just sit there all year long and, uh, and not get, you know, used by the, by the community in its intended purpose. So that's kind of the recommendation that I would have for, for grant funding.
Thank you. Um, regarding City Hall, uh, water harvest, rainwater harvesting, that was a grant, right?
We've never applied.
Okay.
Cuz we didn't have any of the plans to apply.
Yeah, so there's the LCRI grant, there's, there are grants enough that I had in my head, but there's grants for this.
Yeah.
It may not be.
I think Jolanda with the DHLA, LCRI.
It was, and we didn't make it. We, we only have two of the rainwater collection, uh, plans in place right now.
Yeah.
So, uh, I was really hoping to get at least three to consider, but even then, we, uh, we would then have to apply for that grant, so and that's in January.
Which means next fiscal year, so if there's, we'll leave the, down below, to Mike's point of, uh.
Right, we would have to know what the match was and have a specific grant earmarked to it because you can't, it's called supplementing. You can't put in, I will call it fake cuz we're intending to apply for grants, but it is fake because it's not an actual set amount and expenditure planned for. So you can't supplement your budget. You can't raise the tax rate on people for money that you don't actually know if you're going to be spending. And grants is the one thing that almost always counts as supplementing. So it is good that we already moved it out of the, right, bill of budget, but we need to, it has to be specifically earmarked.
I'd say we remove one-ninety-six grant matches entirely.
And that's not saying we don't apply for.
Yeah, it's just, I understand the concept now. I, I was thinking, I looked at the project, you know, and my brain was, it'll probably be this much.
Yeah.
But what I'm hearing now is it needs to be more specific than that.
It does. And so like, the example that's good is like the PoZAC situation. Going into that, we knew we needed a certain match, right?
We were asking for this much.
So we get calculated.
Yeah.
And great, guess what happened in the first year? We didn't use it.
Yeah.
And it was, I don't remember where it was, but that could have been potential supplementing cuz we didn't, you know, it was the next year where it was awarded, yeah. So we just needed to be more careful about that.
Yeah, and, and if I might, uh, Mayor, um, what I would recommend the city do going forward is selecting a grant management firm, uh, putting an RFQ out for that and actually selecting a grant management firm. And what that firm will do in the future is actually scan possible grants that the city could be, be applying for and they will work as your. On what?
We've been working with GrantWorks for a couple of years.
Okay.
But are you saying we have to go for a proposal? On that?
We.
I, if you, if you, if you hadn't had somebody, I would say go for a proposal. If you have a firm that you've been using and, and you're good with that, then you can stick with them. Uh, but what they should be doing is constantly scanning and making sure that you guys are aware of potential grants. That way you can include them in your, your fiscal budgets. Um, and, and also, you know, tell you the, the, you know, reasonability of you actually obtaining the grant. You know, they can do a preliminary scoring that goes, hey, you know, you guys can apply for this, but your chances of getting it are, you know, fifty percent. So I wouldn't allocate money for that. Um, you know, if you, if you do a preliminary scoring and you're, you know, seventy-five percent or better as far as like, you know, actually getting the grant, then that'd be a good time for you to go, okay, we actually want to, you know, plan in our next fiscal budget to put that money aside because we have a really good chance of getting this grant. Um, so that's the kind of advisement you should be getting from your, your grant management firm. And if they're doing that, that's great. If not, maybe you'd say, hey, you know, we really need you guys to pay a little bit more attention to us. And if they don't do that, you know, reaching out and trying to find those firms that, that would be, you know, able to give you that type of information. So I don't really know where you guys stand on that, but that's, uh, that's the best way to be looking at grants cuz it's a very, very competitive field. Um, you know, there's a lot of grants out there, but everybody, every city in Texas is applying for those same grants. And so you need to have an edge up by having a firm that's letting you know early on and then letting you know, you know, if you can get those grants or not.
Thank, thank you. So we, working with GrantWorks is a new thing for us and I'm the, kind of the contact to them. And I've always been asking them to be more aggressive, to come and tell me, come and tell us. Cuz what, what ends up happening is I go through the research, find these grants and I give it to them and I go, do you think this would be a good match? And then I start meetings and all this stuff and then, so I like your perspective, which is, we're actually asking for somebody who does that towards us. They're aggressive and brings things to us.
Yeah, when we first started talking to them, that's kind of where it was. Instead of, we, you know, we need help in these areas. What's out there? And they, they came back with, you know, some idea that we followed up on. That's, that's what seems to be missing now is them going back out, so I need to make time to get back in touch with them and go.
Well, I, I check in on them all the time. Cuz I find grants and I go, hey.
I, I think the idea, I mean, that's kind of a side topic, but it sounds like we need to bring up an RFP for.
That's what I read.
For them because I don't believe we ever went to RFP. I believe that we got linked up with them because of the community block development grant.
But then we have to, we had to.
We had to select them, but it.
No, we were, we were told we had to go out for grants and we could include them and get their RFP, but we got RFPs from multiple branding.
Yeah, maybe then see the rest of them. More than.
Yeah.
This condition.
I mean, they've worked with us and said, in order for you to work with us, you have to go out for RFP.
Yes.
We will apply and, you know, if our proposal is best, then we'd love to work with you.
Then we had a panel rate, all of the columns.
Right.
That I want, what he's talking about. So I made a note, thank you, Mike. That's very helpful information.
Y'all wanna talk about the deer field issue because it looks like, uh, that number is gonna be significantly lower than what's here in the capital improvements based on the big pocket that's going out. Right, so ninety thousand?
Sure. Um, I, I, that's my responsibility. I measured it, they had it five hundred feet long by sixteen feet. I measured nearly six hundred feet by twenty feet with a small section, about eighty feet with sixteen wide. So I thought there was a, a lot more to pay based on our prior paving. But if they want to stick with, they said eighty.
Right, so I was probably, there's like eighty and some change, right? Eighty-three or eighty-four?
Yeah, probably, but I don't know, even if, I just remember eighty and I thought that was about that. But let's put it in and then it's, um, we'll see what they come in.
Well, the other thing is, I mean, the, where we've got bond funds listed in capital improvement, um, at a hundred fifty, you know, if eighty of that is going for deer field, you know, we're still trying to patch up the mess of Wood Creek Drive. Um, and have been in contact with, uh, the owners of, of that road as far as it goes to, um, get a script of easement on that property so that we would have the ability to maintain it. Um, which means that we could go in and, you know, play up that stretch, you know, from, at least from our, where our maintenance ends down to the side of the point of interest. Whereas, if we can go further than that, better. But whether, whether it's the, the lodges or whether it's the golf course, um, from what I'm hearing from legal counsel is that, is that we, we are asking for a script of easement is a no-brainer. If we had to take it to court, it would, it would cost us money, but it would be, I mean, it would, well, certainly be. Just because that road has been used publicly. Just because that road has been used public, as public road for fifty years by ourselves. So we would need money from the bond fund cover. So, so is that what eighty is? I mean, is, is deer field plus?
Isn't there a path of deer field um, that also won't be covered by the bond, by the grant? It's not just the one long stretch.
Of deer field?
Yeah.
The grant cover is north to south. This is talking about east to west. You think bond funds should cover east to west?
But I heard that the north is the south, that it wasn't going to be able to cover the whole street.
No.
Maybe I heard wrong.
No, that's why it's shorter than what we initially intended.
So anything, anything that the grant doesn't pay, we pay. Yeah.
So you're wanting to add deer field plus Cypress Point. How do we label that?
Western end of, of Wood Creek Drive.
So we're leaving that number the same because of that.
That for script.
That's my, that's kind of request.
Okay. Good planning.
Yeah.
Uh, I did have a question based on what we saw from through on the safety enhancement program. Do we feel like eighty thousand is enough to cover the remainder that's not covered under road bond funds? So that would be things like all of the signs, uh, the speed cushions, um, the moving of the uh, guard rail.
What did their proposals mean though?
It was like, like two hundred thousand.
Two hundred ninety eight thousand.
Yeah, two hundred ninety eight thousand. Eighty grand of that is bond money.
Is deer field.
Deer field. Uh, what thirty or some of it's the driveway. So those can be set aside because that's bond money as well.
Sixty thousand.
And then um, there's the guard rail, the radar sign installations. And the speed, so the only thing not covered under bond fund are radars, the speed cushions, other signs and the guard rail.
And there's, do you need ten thousand more for road signs in front on either side of?
If we choose to install them, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great one.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I missed just a moment ago. Did, what did you do about or where did you bring in that western part of Wood Creek? The end of Red Creek Drive. Where did you put that in here?
We would be using um, the bond fund for that.
The, the. Using bond funds to acquire the legal.
Not to acquire.
Prescription.
To do the.
It exists on its own because we've been using the road for twenty five plus years.
That means, I'm just asking, is that what you're saying? We're going after that as a.
We haven't already to pave it.
No, well, the.
We do not have an easement.
Yes.
By, not legally.
Not yet, but.
I'm saying, are you planning on going out?
Negotiations.
So you're going to obtain, obtain the, the easement by prescription?
Hmm.
Because I understand what that is, but I, and you're going to pay for it at a bond money.
No. Yep. No, we're gonna, we're gonna take the equal fees out of the bond money.
The easement exists. Getting someone to acknowledge.
I know what an easement, a prescription means.
Okay, please stop, please.
I'm asking where you're paying.
I know, I'm trying to tell you. Just a second. We've been in conversation with attorneys. Now, we're trying to do this as a agreement between the parties rather than taking it to court. So it will cost us very little. If we have to take it to court, it will still cost us relatively a little, a little cost more. But we're not, we're not, we're not budgeting the, you know, litigation fees out of the bond money. No.
Okay. So you're going to use the bond money to actually pay it when you get it, when you get the easement settled. Okay. I thought you were saying have it settled and there were expenses involving in addition to the pay. So I got it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, under community relations on one fifty-two. So we've been thinking about community relations and maybe this isn't the right place. And I'm going to ask Mike to kind of listen and maybe he can give another location for this concept. Um, Iris Ramos, I'm going to use her as my inspiration. Um, she wanted us to, she was acknowledging all the volunteers and staff of the city of this, I'm sorry, dude.
Iris, oh, Iris, Iris Ramos. Yes, thank you. And
I think it's a really good concept of, we have the Spirit of Wood Creek Award. Um, I like the concept of having possibly volunteer events that celebrate the volunteers. Um, also I think we should have a budget that's like staff appreciation days, like for their birthdays or, and then there's that other elements like when we were having budget meeting right back to back with council meetings and we had to get sandwiches, like making a budget line or somewhere. I'm initially thinking community relations, but it's the inverse of that, of internal relations. So I don't know how it would, where it would fit.
Well, you know, we think about it as community and I'll, I'll defer to Mike on this. But you know, if you think about community relations, um, all of the volunteers are part of the community. Um, all but one of our current staff are, you know, live here. Um, they're part of the community. Um, they're paid staff, but I mean, it's like, like there could be an argument for, you know, sort of in that whole section of, you know, office equipment and supplies and entertainment or whatever, you know, so. Or, you know, can it all be under community relations? I don't, I don't, how did we end up with ninety-three twenty-seven?
I think that's where you're usually back to.
That's where we dumped it, really.
Yeah.
So Michael, how would you put in the budget that kind of concept of those things that we do? In these little ways to celebrate, but would it be other community relations?
No.
You're on mic, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I, I'm trying to stay quiet when I'm not needed. Uh, I, I would say that it, it's better if you separate those. So anytime you're, you're looking external, um, listed in your community relations fund where you're going to be doing community events or, you know, inviting the general community as a whole. Um, I also, I, I, you know, I really like um, setting that aside to do, um, you know, it could be either staff relations. You know, something that we did in Wimberly is we did a staff and board uh dinner to where, you know, we invited all of staff and all of uh, the boards to a, a dinner that, that was nice and just wanted to say thank you for, you know, your, your service throughout the year. Um, and that's in a separate line item. Uh, I forget exactly what, what it's called in Wimberly, but it, but it was an internal uh mechanism to do something similar for employee culture and also recognize your, your numerous uh, you know, volunteers on your boards. Um, and so anytime you're looking internal, I think it is good to keep those separate because I think it does just uh more true value for your citizens to kind of see exactly where that's going.
So.
I have something to add to that. So in those trainings, they talked about this in particular and Mike's advice is really important because anytime private funds are being, um, sorry, anytime public funds are being used for private purposes, like giving a gift to a volunteer, we're actually supposed to have a policy in place that sets apart the standards for that. Meaning like, a blind item is a good start, right? Cause it sets aside, okay, these are, this is city money being used to fund private food, private appreciation, kind of like employee retention stuff. But the city is actually supposed to have a supporting policy or program in place for that so that the taxpayers know in advance how their money will be spent. I don't know how, like, maybe not all the small cities do that kind of stuff, but as Mike recommended, at least the separate budget item would be of, of stuff in transparency.
So we have like a staff and volunteer appreciation line item?
Yeah, just like we can't give Christmas bonuses without having a policy for Christmas bonuses. We can't as a city give any kind of gifts or money without a policy unless it can be directly and explicitly argued as for public good. Like when we donate to the library because we don't want, have a public library, that can be, that's above water. But if we were to donate to, I can't even think of another entity, the Baptist Church, because they beautified a corner or something, we could argue that that wouldn't be appropriate. Right? Cause that's, you're, it's getting a little mixed up. But so how do we approach addressing this today?
Well, we add a line item where under, I mean, just like, I just put it like a, insert something one fifty-three, they say staff and volunteer appreciation.
Can I?
They're related.
Can I ask your question, Mike? I know that you're working on a reformatting and restructuring. Would something like that just be best as a note tonight since it's creating a new account code and everything?
Yeah, I, I, well, my plan is, is if, if council wants to do that, when we're, when we're doing, building this budget out, I'll just, I'll, I'll create the new account code. I, it, there may be something already in there because I like literally you guys have a ton of accounts. Um, and so what I, what I want to make sure we do is jump in there and see if there's anything that's already created that's, that's, you know, substantially similar. Um, and then we can rename that if it, if it's different to the staff and, and volunteer appreciation um, or recognition program and make it as simple as possible. But we can include that in the Excel spreadsheet pretty easily and then get a correlated uh bounce back on Fund View uh for, you know, your permanent setup. And then once, once the budget's approved, um, I want to reassure council that what I'd really like to do is to have Fund View mirror the budget that you're approving. And so that when you're getting your monthly reports from, from the, uh, the external CPA, if you guys decide to go that route, it, it's very similar. You guys kind of have that flowing through year after year to where, you know, you're not trying to figure out, hey, was this the online item we talked about? You know, it, it'll make it much less confusing for you guys.
Okay.
So. With that thought that.
Yeah, I would just say we, maybe you separate some of the money out in your uh, community relations. Or, you know, if you have, you know, extra savings from things that you're removing from the budget tonight, we can include, you know, whatever dollar amount you want in staff appreciation. Um, and the other thing I, that you, what you're right uh about is, you know, if you're giving a gift or even a meal, you, you're not supposed to spend more than fifty dollars per individual by state law. Um, and so, you know, you, when you're having a dinner for somebody, um, you need to make sure that whatever caterer you're, you're bringing in or whatever, you know, organization you're using, isn't going to be more than fifty dollars per participant. Um, and so that, that's important for you guys just to, to maintain. You don't even have to have a policy, like I said, state law. You guys aren't allowed to receive gifts of more than fifty. You're not allowed to give gifts to anybody of more than fifty, so.
Yeah. I knew about the receiving or giving like staff, but you don't think of that when you're talking about buying food for a group of people, right? And that, especially if we don't know the count coming in. So that's good to know.
So my question then is should, should we um, adjust this ninety-three twenty-seven to include some additional money for what we're talking about on, on staff and volunteer appreciation? Keep that on community relations now with a note that is to be segmented out. So it would take, you know, whatever it is, thirty-five hundred dollars down, you know, for staff volunteer appreciation.
Is that what you want to do? Thirty-five hundred?
Well, how many volunteers do, I mean, if we took, if we did all the volunteers, probably.
And have a barbecue.
And then, and then all of us, that's fifty, right? So let's say there's fifty people that would be included in that group at fifty dollars a head. That's, that's twenty-five hundred just for that dinner, right?
So thirty, so are we taking the thirty-five out of the nine?
No, I'm adding thirty-five to.
Just under it basically.
Right.
Okay.
So that would be in twelve, twelve eight, eight.
Just run to that. But, but we've made other adjustments.
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand is good.
Okay.
But we have that note in there that, that it is going to be broken out into a separate line item for the, um, as they, as they work further on the budget. So it will be counted for, so that's the next thing.
Also, wouldn't the signs be, the spirit of Wood Creek signs would fall into that too, wouldn't it? Cause it's.
I think, I don't know how those are.
Well, it's not a gift. I mean, these are appreciation.
No, I, I just kind of have it been for when we, when we ordered before, you know, it's probably just office supplies or something.
Okay.
Yeah. It would be good to have this because then it would, it would make it, that's where it would go. Maybe it was an elbow.
Did we overrule you, Jim, and just move on without you? And you still have a few?
No, I mean, I've got one more question.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, we were talking about, well, two, I think there's two areas.
Two, one is combining mowing and landscaping together.
We have that in the note.
I just want to make sure that we're good with that.
Yeah.
And that amount should be, I was looking at, we've miscoded some things, but that, that should be.
So we're looking at twelve thousand total?
For landscape.
So twelve thousand total for the two items?
Yes.
So combining one-one-seven with one-two-zero.
Sure. I just said put you in the mo.
Well, I mean, we can zero out, no, we can, and, and add landscape maintenance in this budget, right?
Yeah.
There were.
Yeah.
So it says seven thousand and we zero and so five thousand landscape maintenance will be twelve thousand.
My last point was the municipal court. We've got twenty-nine thousand budget for total court costs.
Hmm.
We're not going to use that. I mean, uh, and me and Mike talked about two, talking on this mic too, like, um, those funds could be better utilized somewhere else if we need. Um, for our code enforcement, where people are minding their banners and doing what they're supposed to do. We have some special situations that might require, um, Charlie could send a letter and do some of that thing. So it might pump up something on that, those lines, but I think twenty-nine thousand dollars would be better utilized somewhere else. So.
Okay, so, so if, if something happens and, and we did have to take somebody to court.
Hmm.
Um, you know, then I would think that we would, if we were going to move some of this twenty-nine or all of the twenty-nine thousand, that this part of it would go maybe to the litigation line item under the attorney.
Right.
Um, and then, and we would have to take them to, to court. You know, in a, in word of face scenario. I mean, we, you know, we've been really good about talking to people and settling before it gets to that, to that point, but. You know, um.
Right. Just in, in our discussions, it's like, you know, Charlie sent them a letter. That's probably, if we got to that point, it's probably going to get some kind of positive response. And if not, then, you know, I don't proceed, you know, we got some of the issues of houses that are starting to get rundown and that type of thing, but. Um, you know, I don't know that with, with, I don't see with what I've done in the last year of code enforcement that anything major is coming would become to municipal court. Everybody's pretty much fallen in on, you know, after a couple of letters at the most, they're like, okay, I get it. So.
Well, I, just to speak to this, I am sitting on council for three years now. We were just repetitively told, we needed this, we needed this, we had to have this.
Right.
So right now we have fresh administration again. The message is changing. Um, and that's always, you know, especially because it was one of those items that actually citizens did come in and, you know, give us a rant about kind of dealing like, you have to have this, we can't enforce it without it. So I guess this was a bit of a bombshell for me, right? The, the like, oh, nevermind, we don't need it. Um, and I know that Mike had a lot of experience in Wimberly dealing with this, so, you know, like, and Wimberly is so much bigger, right? Just so many more people. But was it ever really an issue? I guess is what I'm saying. Or like, how much were you spending on litigation? Like, are we really hurting ourselves by not pursuing municipal court after like nearly three years of attempting to pursue one?
Similar to earlier.
I do. I'm just, that's all I can reference, right? But.
Yeah. Mike, can you speak on that?
Yeah.
Our discussions.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, well, thanks for the opportunity to talk on it. Um, yeah. So in Wimberly, we, we did not have any municipal court either. And kind of my discussions with, with Jim, um, you know, in those instances, which, you know, you may have, let's say, just a dozen of those a year where you just have somebody that is really difficult to work with and just really isn't um, complying with your, your local ordinances that code enforcement would need to continually put pressure on to do it. Um, in, in my opinion, issuing a citation is going to be very problematic and here, and here's why. Even though, you know, Jim has been serving as a code enforcement officer and knows your regulations and, and things like that. You know, if he issues a citation, it, it creates a, a kind of an issue where you're going to have to have a municipal court. And, you know, let's say, for instance, if you use the uh, the precinct three constables, uh, or, you know, or, or the justice of peace courtroom, you guys would lease that out. You guys would lease that out, you also, also have to have a court security officer. That is, that is certified by the state of Texas to be a court security officer, you have to have the ability to, to screen for weapons. You're going to have to also put signs, you know, if you, let's say we wanted to use council chambers as the court. You're going to have to put signs for concealed carry on there, whether you're going to allow that or not, you got to put metal detectors there. Um, you know, you're, you're going to expend an enormous amount of money. And, you know, and, and kind of the profession and how we tackled it in Wimberly was by trying, trying to strengthen our nuisance abate, abatement ordinances. Um, by doing so, you would, would, um, make it more of a civil matter. And so if you strengthen your nuisance abatement ordinance, you can even, you know, give the right to hire an external third party. Let's say it's somebody who's not mowing their grass, you would be able to, uh, issue them notices and warnings, make sure Charlie gets involved, write letters. But at some point, you'd be actually able to hire a contractor to go in and mow the property and put a lien on their property for whatever it costs to do that. Now, that's a, a last case resort and, and in Wimberly, we never had to do that. And in any city I've managed, we haven't had to do that. But the threat of doing that i- is, you know, something that actually solves a problem, because if you issue a citation. And it goes to a municipal court judge and he can fine them, let's say, five hundred dollars. They may still not do whatever you guys are asking them to do in the community. And then, you know, you may issue them another citation. Um, and that goes back to court and you pay, you know, another fine for five hundred dollars. But if you're, you're nuisance abatement ordinances aren't strong enough, the problem never gets solved anyway. So you guys would be sending a, an enormous amount of money to try to, to do a, 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 something that wouldn't solve your problems. Which I, I know the community is very concerned about. And so when I saw this and, and talking to, you know, numerous people. Um, and, and I get to work with communities your size, all of the state of Texas. It's a very difficult process to afford a municipal court that you're not going to utilize very much.
Okay. Do we want to zero it out?
Yeah. And then I do like the mayor's idea of moving some of this over to.
Well, if, if I might real quick, and I, I like mayor's idea on the, the city attorney, instead of using city attorney funds in that line item where you're talking about. Um, legal representation for the city, what I would recommend is maybe leaving five thousand dollars in your prosecutor area here. Um, that way, when, you know, he's mailing those letters out, there's a separate line item that you guys can track and go, hey. Cause if you just blend it in with your, your normal city attorney fees, um, it can be, it was going to be confusing at the end of the year, but how much should we actually spend on, on code enforcement letters? Um, so what I'd like to do is if you guys would leave, you know, five thousand in the prosecutor section, anytime that Charlie's used for that on bill hours. Um, your staff can enter that here, and then at the end of the year, you can track exactly what you spent on code enforcement letters.
Thank you.
All right, so I put five thousand under prosecutors, the attorney bill hours for code enforcement is the note. I zeroed everything else out. No, that's supposed to be five thousand.
Yeah, it's like, oh, but do we want to move money into legal and this stuff, how much?
No, that's what he was saying, leave it under the process.
Don't put anything in there.
Yeah.
So just, so we're just, we're just wiping out twenty-two thousand and then, and what?
So and, and this way Charlie will, like, it'll help staff quota. I wanted to go back to that concern of mine over the safety enhancement program. I am not sure that we have enough money allocated here for the additional items, so we kind of stopped in the middle of that map.
So I have some input on that, um. Uh, that is, let's say eighty thousand is deer field, sixty thousand are driveways. Fifty thousand are speed cushion, that's hundred and ninety. At least a hundred and ten thousand of the, of the three hundred thousand. Fifty-four thousand of that, I just think there's way too much adding in some of those. Fifty-four thousand is mobilization general conditions, which is kind of just a, a little room for a general contractor. That's double what we paid for mobilization for the nine miles of roads, so.
Yeah, I think you talked about that a little bit because there's so many small things. But again, the road bond funds pay for everything related to the driveways and deer field. Specifically, so those amounts can be removed. What I was asking about is the amounts for the radar signs, the other signs, the speed cushions and the guardrails. Did we have an amount on those?
There's fifty thousand on speed cushions.
And then.
Guard rail.
Okay.
I just can't pull it up.
Yeah.
I've got it there.
Okay, so general condition, that was a fifty-four. Guard rail is seventeen, let's say eighteen thousand. The signs are installed signs for ten thousand dollars, they're just seen.
And then is that the rider?
Three thousand. Um, I just.
So maybe eighty's fine. And that's going to my original estimate, but we didn't have their full packet. And I guess we can leave it, I, I just don't want to be under, you know what I mean? I don't want to be trying to scramble to.
Well, so if we approached it the other direction, we, we do the cost for the things that we know are coming out of the bond.
But it, it didn't include the parts that are for the bond still. So that, so what was interesting is that they put it all together, because when we talked about that item with Freeland Turk. They actually recommended not putting it all together, as far as like what bond money was going to be used. But what he did say in the meeting was that that's a back-end deal, that they'll mesh off that accounting later. And I was like, okay, that's, that's on outside my.
Because the person, the, the people that are going to do the same thing, um, the driveways, deer field. That's going to be certain contractor, they're not necessarily be one of the new speed, speedy cushions and radar signs. So, it's going to sort of.
Yeah, I mean, they're, I mean, the, the plan for the, for the big package is that one company would do it, and they're going to set contract to do the other things. So it's not, I don't think they're going to piece me all, the, the deal, they're just going to say, okay, but you're going to do all this stuff and how do it? We don't really care what subcontractors you use. You know, but they're trying to get a, a bid from a reputable company that can, can manage and oversee that. And like, like, for instance, Alpha, you know, Alpha Mayor may not have a crew that installed the directional sensor on the trees in the, in the tree islands that just got it done. Right, so.
Oh, yeah, but they didn't. I just think these costs are a lot, so, okay, we'll see what happens, but eighty thousand, they just took out.
On this, on the expenses down here, I'm going to write Deerfield plus Western Wood Creek Drive.
Yeah, just because we have it above and.
Yeah. Um, City Hall renovation, we never bumped that number. Jim, did you have an idea what you think? Like, if we were going to go ahead and tear off this wall, like, we learn, we can, and we do that.
I haven't, it's going to take a little more of a time to get around that idea. We also kind of need to decide on what, what it is we want to do. We're going to shrink up the front office to gain, you know, how are we going to gain space other than this one of the wall? So, without good plans, I can only guess.
So.
It was nine thousand last turn.
I know, but when we, I mean, a few years ago, we, we actually, I know that, that Brenton got, uh, somebody to come in and sketch out. You know, what it might look like to sort of blow out some walls and expand it. And, you know, we carried a, a line in the budget for capital improvement on, on City Hall renovations. That we carried it year to year for a while, and I want to say it was like a hundred and fifty grand that we were talking about. Um, but that was a, that would make it a little bit, you know, so if, if we were to, to do. Some significant remodeling to, to gain us some space. I mean, I think the, the least we might be paying is, it, um, that's just based on some remodeling that I've done. You know, that, that, you know, it was like, you can't talk to anybody for.
All right, I'm opening fifty thousand. We just gained twenty-nine, twenty. Well.
Yeah, but that's in the, that's in the budget, there's a possibility capital improvement. We're talking budget bound, we're talking about right now of sixty-five thousand dollars based on the changes we've made.
Yeah, of, uh, addition, right?
Right, we're, we're in the black, sixty-five thousand, like, forty.
Can I, on that note, can I talk about lowering the tax rate?
Yes.
Uh, so. The amount we're raising is kind of ridiculous, if you look in the packet, let me see if I can open it easily. Uh, no, it's a long packet. Uh, we're talking about fourteen hundred dollars. By leaving the no new revenue rate, and I just, why don't we just not?
Yeah, why don't we just go to the no new revenue rates?
Yeah?
Yeah.
All right, uh, so that's a vote we have to take exiting the workshop, just ahead of.
Okay.
Um. With that in mind, I also wanted to briefly discuss. Our salaries, I believe that we're inflated. And would like to talk about reduction in salaries.
I was concerned they were insufficient, but, okay.
What, what line item?
It's under administrative, administration personnel, salaries and wages.
There you go.
Um.
Actually know what people make here, so.
Well, it would be like an across-the-board reduction based on, like, finances. I don't know, like, we, we way overinflated to get. One, you know, one person's salary. And that, and across-the-board reduction would maybe level out some of the pay inequalities here. But also kind of bring us more in line with like. So if we look at the amount we're spending on our employees, it should be below a certain percent of our overall costs. And so I believe that we're. Kind of high, we're kind of top-heavy on that, right?
Can I turn that question to Mike?
Yeah.
Mike, um, is there kind of a standard of a percentage of a budget that you would spend towards salary? Like, is there some standard?
There is, but I have not done that calculation, um, so I, I can't speak to it as far as what your salaries are. Um, I, I, I did talk to Jim recently about, um, you know, seeing exactly what individual salaries are in the city. And I haven't had a chance to really look at that. But, uh, you know, I, I would say that, you know, kind of looking at your industry standard around, you know, communities your size in that area. And then kind of going, are, are we in the market? Um, and, and, you know, certainly there are probably, you know, um, the position, I, and I know we, we've talked about as far as the city administrator goes. Uh, you know, what, what you guys want to pay for that, um, and then, you know, city secretary and, and your clerk. But, um, those, those, you know, there are two calculations you need to look at, is how much of your, your budget are you paying in salaries? And then also, um, you know, are you guys in the market for those particular positions? It's, it's going to be a little bit difficult comparing apples to apples, because you guys don't have public safety. And so when you look at a number of other cities, you know, a lot of their budget's going to be spent on either police or fire or EMS. Um, and so their percentages are probably going to be, you know, much more skewed than yours would be, since you're not actually covering those, those, uh, public safety topics, so.
Well, I guess I was asking that number, when we talk about a percentage of the budget, what is something you would have in your head for us?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I, I, that's what I'm, I'm struggling with, because, you know, typically a city is going to spend about seventy percent of their, their annual budget. On salaries because they have police and fire. Um, and that's, you know, you, you guys would need to be a little bit more in line with Wimberly. However, Wimberly spends a lot of money on, on parks personnel. Um, you know, because of, of the summer season, the blue hole and different things, there, there's a large amount of our, our, uh, revenue in Wimberly that we spent on that type of personnel. So I would really have to, you know, maybe spend some time and kind of look at that and, and, uh, you know, kind of give you guys, uh, you know, an estimate of where you guys should be positioned. Eliminating those external factors.
What number do you?
We are down from two-twenty last year to one-ninety. That's because we don't have, we weren't projecting a city manager, a higher position, and only a city administrator. So what's included in this, city administrator, city secretary, uh, admin. And Sean, so admin and Sean.
City clerk.
City clerk.
City clerk and Sean.
And Sean, those two together are fifty thousand. The other makes up the bulk of it, but that's what the city had been paying. And just, um, just suddenly say, no, we're going to hit some sort of a ratio and fire everyone. Or say you get a huge cut in pay, I think that would be wise.
I don't, I don't, I would, I would, I would have a problem with just doing. Across-the-board salary reductions, I think that's the kind of thing that you just handle through extraterms.
Yes, right, yeah.
So right now, like, we've been consistently sitting at like thirty percent. Um, so I was recommending getting down to twenty percent. And where I partially got some of this from discussions, um, in fact, but also in watching that training. It talked about, uh, top-heavy expenditures in staff specifically. And how, uh, using a ratio like twenty percent is actually very helpful. And they acknowledged the cities that don't use, uh, like, don't pay for those other public services. All right, how all of that's paid out of our property taxes, we pay for those services through, like, to the county, right? Um, so they, they did talk about in those trainings, they said twenty, you know, twenty percent is, is good for smaller cities. Um, because again, it's the concept of like being able to run the city in the event that there was an emergency or any, you know. So if we're getting real top-heavy on what we're paying staff, we don't have the flexibility we need to cover. Projects that actually benefit citizens, if that makes sense. And so especially if we're hiring and paying people without experience, wages that are comparable to people with ten to twenty years of experience. Like we did with the last person, um, I, that's kind of a no-no, we need to get away from that. I just, it's an area where we're top-heavy on, that we don't really necessarily meet standards in regards to like a city of your size, so.
So Mike, you plan on bringing to us, uh, your. Information, your recommendation when it comes to this topic?
Yeah, 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 I can get with, uh, Deborah and kind of see exactly what video she watched and, and then, you know, I, I would like to have a little more time to spend on that. I, I, I would say that, you know, a couple of things that I noticed is if you're, if you're reducing your, your city administrator pay. And, and I, I think you're reducing that potentially at twenty thousand dollars or somewhere in there or more. Um, that's, that's your highest level position. And so you do need to look at other positions within the city to make sure that you're not incongruent with the organizational structure. Um, and so you, you always want to make sure that you're, you're bridging enough gap there to where, you know, the pay structures flow throughout the city. Um, the, the, the other topic that I, that I want to say is I, 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 I know you guys are going to be hiring a city administrator. But have you, yeah, and I, and this, Jim, I don't know, because I haven't seen the individual salaries. But if, if Jim is not hired as your city administrator, do you guys have enough money budgeted to keep Jim on as a code enforcement officer? Um, and is that allocated in this particular budget line item for salaries? Because if it's not, and you guys decide, you know, you know, to go with somebody else as the administrator. You, you may want to keep Jim on in that code enforcement role if he, if he wants to, and, and you need to make sure that that's built into this budget as well.
I believe it is. No, you removed code.
No, no.
Your condensing job.
Uh, condensing the jobs.
Yeah, hope it's not in it.
Because our, uh, if you look at, at what we have been discussing for administrator position, it includes. Code enforcement activity.
It was originally.
Like, like how it always happened.
Right.
So, you know, we were able to do that quite nicely before, um. And, and then, you know, just, and, and I don't want to, I mean, Mike, close your ears. But, um, but, you know, I've been, I've been, I've been in the bureaucracy for a lot of years. And I just know how people are, are rewarded, they're rewarded, you know, by headcount and budgeting. It's like, it's always increasing, making out always increasing budget. You know, and that's, that's, you know, how they, you know, how they score points, you know, it's just like, that's not what we're here to do. You know, so, so we need to take a look at, at what. You know, so, so we need to take a look at, at what it really takes to run the city. Um, and, I mean, we don't have to go that far back before all we needed to run the city was when they available. You know, at probably maybe thirty thousand dollars. I don't, I don't know what.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, forty-two thousand dollars.
Worked every time.
Yeah, and, and it's just like.
And it was quite fine.
Yeah, and, and we have been. Raising salaries and raising headcount. Um, for the last several years, you know, ever since my two-city manager of the law. And, and I've, I've spoken against it, I've voted against it, I've been working to sort of get that back under control for a long time. I appreciate the staff that we have, they're, they're hardworking. I don't want to see anything happen there, but, um, but, you know, we have to get it under control. And knocking a few thousand, uh, like thirty thousand dollars up last year for this year, but it's sort of, I thought we bled it that. Um. You know, and, and also it's, it's kind of tough right now because we are in, you know, we're hiring, you know, it's like, like. We've got the, um, we've got today at five o'clock, we closed the, um, city administrator position RFP. So I need to take a look at those and start that interview process. I think that we can, I think that we can pull it off. And the number we're talking about, I don't think that we can reduce it forty thousand dollars, we're just, that's like a twenty percent. Um, of, of our revenues would be if you take it down to twenty. I don't, I don't think we can get quality people in for that time. I think we have to pay. I mean, I, I was CEO of the company. Until I retired a couple of years ago, that has a much better budget than this. Um, but not much better. I mean, it's about a million a year, um, on average. Um, I had, and we still have three or four times as many people as many staff. Um, and I think my top salary that I paid myself was about seventy thousand. You know, and, you know, so, cause it, Wimberly, at Woodcreek, if I'd been in Austin or Houston, I'd make many times that. And, and that's still with it, I mean, we're in a small town, I mean, that's, we, you know, if you want to make the big money, go to the big city. But here, you know, we, we're looking.
Quality of life here.
We're looking for hometown, quality of life. Yeah, yeah, and you might be able to make more money elsewhere, knock yourself out. But if you want to work for the city of Woodcreek, um, and, and, and get those benefits. Um, of, of being here in Woodcreek. And then, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna sacrifice a little talent.
With everything we're over thirty percent, like if you, if you use this number, we're at thirty percent. If you use this number down here with total, it's over thirty, or it's getting closer to forty.
We can get rid of retirement and health, no. So that is just thirty percent of this. Is, um, sour benefit.
So in the last budget thing, you, you did express concerns about it being too large. So now you're happy with this number? Cause I watched that training since then, that's what kind of shifted my perspective on the amount we're spending to staff and, and like. Do this, you know?
Added, I mean, the other thing too, remember, we added benefits that does not exist before.
Yes.
We've started saying health insurance stipends, another thing, so we've added to the personnel.
People who are contracted. And that adds a lot to the budget.
None of this is contracted people, this is staff personnel only.
Oh, no, but because we took contract people and gave them.
Made them employees.
Which automatically added thirty percent to what we're already paying.
We also sincerely reduced the overtime wages though, because we were blowing overtime out of the water for the last two years.
Right, so there's, there's, there's a box there probably, pretty close to it, but. But we didn't pay health insurance stipends to anyone but the, but the city manager. Um. Retirement. CML.
Alright. So we have.
If it's okay with council, um, what I, what I'd like to do is in our nut, next budget workshop, I, I can do, I can bring two things with me or, or provide counsel with this information. And that would be, um, the, the salary range for the ci, the positions that you have, which, you know, if, if you just look at your city administrator, city secretary. And city clerk, um, you know, the, uh, we're talking about Taffey. Um, and we say, what, what are the ranges in just Hayes County and smaller communities for those positions? Um, and then when we look at those, you know, other cities, whether it's, you know, Wimberly and different things, and we only look at those three positions compared to their annual budget and then we get that percentage. Um, that would also be some good information, uh, you know, I, I, I know coun, councilwoman, um, you talked about a percentage that, you know, is recommended overall. But kind of in your region, if we look at communities and those three positions, would that provide more information for council to, to make a, 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 a good recommendation on, on this particular topic?
Yeah, because we want to be competitive. I mean, I've argued that repetitively. If you don't pay well, we're not going to get good staff, right? You don't, you don't get the people who are, you know, highly trained. But there is a line there, you know, if you're getting paid more than somebody with, uh, multiple degrees. And X, Y, Z as a public teacher and you, you know, you're not doing any of that, so that's, that's what I'm saying, we're kind, I feel like. We've gotten to a point in Woodcreek where we're, we're paying a whole lot of money. For jobs that. You know, don't necessarily warrant that.
There is also another argument where companies try very hard to retain their employees. Because you have a long investment in training and longevity, so we don't. We've already had some shakeups, I think we should also aim for stability.
So Mike, you said that you'd be able to get some. Research done and, and that we've bringing up another next budget workshop, how much time does that take in terms of like scheduling the next workshop?
Um, I, I, I mean, I should be able to get that together, you know, within a week, I would, I would assume, you know, that budget information is not going to be too difficult to, um, accumulate from other communities and kind of put that together. Um. So, I, you know, if you guys have your next budget workshop next week, or, you know, I'm not sure exactly when council wants to come back at this and, and Jim and, uh, is able to kind of adjust the budget numbers. But, um, as long as it's at least a week out, I should be able to provide that information to council and have a more, uh, robust discussion about, you know, where you guys are at and kind of the philosophy that you want to use going forward, whether that's. You know, lowering salaries, keeping them the same, kind of making sure that you guys are informed and making decisions based on analytical data as opposed to a, anything else.
Well, we do have a meeting next Wednesday, of course. I mean, we could put a budget workshop on the agenda. It hadn't been posted, still got time.
Yeah, I think that'd be fine if, if, uh, if Jim, you know, if you're good with that and getting, you know, kind of this budget corrected and then providing counsel with that numbers.
And, yeah, good, good.
We have post act funds on here, I believe, or I don't know what's going on there, so the events that we have no money left. That parents flew all the way through it, without their.
There really is, there's nothing there.
And I would like to ask Mike a question on that. Mike?
Yes.
And can we talk about? Relevant to that, I asked that everybody have balance sheet. When can we take a look at balance sheet? Balance sheet right now shows we have seven million in the bank and fifty-eight thousand in debt. It is deeply wrong. I wish.
Well, let's keep it at a million and get rid of it.
But, um, I think it goes to. It's going to be some work, but not intangible, that have been trying to work on this. Can we make that a focus? We're almost at the end of our fiscal year and we haven't had a bank. We haven't given financials.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um, if I might speak to that, Jim and I, like I said, had a really good meeting with FundView. Um, I, I jumped into this, you know, a couple of weeks ago and really started looking at, at FundView and, and Councilwoman, I know you, you've been looking at it as well. Um, the, the comprehensive nature of how the system was built, um, and the, the complicated way in which it was built. Has caused a lot of in, uh, inaccuracies in coding your, both your revenue and expenditures. Um, I, I, I told Jim that I would love to try to target that and get it done, you know, as quickly as possible. But that's a very heavy lift because what we're going to have to do is, um, I'm going to start combining some of the accounts that, you know, you guys don't need and trying to bring that number down from four hundred. More in line with probably about a hundred and fifty line items. Um, so there, there's going to be some work in that. Um, but also there'll have to be some journal entries made, um, to get that, those balance sheets made back. Um, and so I would like to say that's an easy process and promise you that we're going to have that in the, you know, next few weeks. Um, but as we get into it, it's a very, very complicated, um, scenario. And what, what I, what I told Jim and, and Mayor, I've also reiterated this to you, is whatever actions we do, we have to meticulously do because when you guys have your audit for twenty-three, twenty-four. Your auditors are going to want to see why we were doing all of the things that we were doing because it's going to shift your numbers, like you said, your, your balances are way off. And as we shift those and get those back in line with where they're supposed to be based on your bank statements. Um, that process matters. And so while I know council would really like to have the numbers and, and be accurate. Um, I also want to take the time to make sure that it doesn't mess up your audit or cause those, those longer-term issues. And so it's definitely an issue Jim and I are working on, um, and I, I don't have, I, I wish I could tell you, it's going to be done next week, but I, I don't know as I get into this. You know, uh, how much it's going to take and also we, we may need to, um, you know, have a CPA come in and make those journal entries, um, instead of having your staff do it. Um, I, if I do a journal entry and, and, and make that change, it's going to look very odd to an auditor because I'm not a CPA. Um, I'm not somebody who is, you know, my, you know, I'm a, a, a city manager and so. What we need to do is get in there and see how much I can do, and then if there's other things that need to be done, we, we possibly look at that third-party CPA. Um, you know, bringing something on like that in order to do those journal entries, but I, I don't know that that's needed yet. Um, it's just, I, I wish the system was, was done differently from the very beginning, but since it wasn't, we just have to, you know, get it corrected and do the best we can. So long answer. Yeah, go ahead.
So I, so could that, could that third-party CPA be FundView? No, like Amy or somebody?
Um. They aren't going to want to make the journal entries because they're your software provider. Um, it, 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 that would also look, um, irregular to a, to an auditor. Um.
What I see is the problem is not the accounting, it's the mystery entries that FundView makes. So it seems to me more of a software problem. I can go in with.
No, it's the way Kevin built it. He completely acted against FundView advice.
I've heard that.
He has referenced in his council's wishes.
I don't see that in the number of times.
No, that's what Amy has directly said. So the person who's handling this has said that our accounts were built incorrectly to start with. And that's why you're having all of these issues because somebody was trying to. Force the system to do something they wanted versus what the system is built to do. Yes, so. Once that gets reconstructed, reconfigured, now it's not all areas apparently, maybe I don't understand.
It's only a few areas and it's just multiple postings.
Well, I can, I can speak to that, uh, really quickly. The, the issue that, that you're seeing is, is with the number of accounts, um, how Kevin built it. Is when, uh, let's say Taffey takes, uh, and, and makes a payment for trees, for instance, and she enters that in a certain code on, on FundView. How it was originally built, um, with the number of accounts that you guys have, Kevin also allowed, uh, transfers from funds. Based on, uh, the account code and that's, that's the, uh, and I know it's probably, we're getting into things that are very complicated, but when. In, in governmental accounting, when you make an entry, um, like say for an expenditure, you're typically not allowed to pull that money from multiple funds. Uh, when you're, when you're looking at general fund, you know, that money would, would all come out of general fund, you know, he also set up an interest and sinking fund and, 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 you know, some capital improvement funds. But when, when it, when an entry is made, he, he's, he's allowed it to pull from different funds. And so when that happens, um, you get back in and it's very hard to budget, say for a general fund, because then on the backend, it's pulling from different areas that is not typical in government. Um, and so that's kind of where our, our issues are and that's where I'm hoping as we, we move those funds and get rid of some of the things we don't need. That the system, and we're working with FundView on this, is to correct the, the way in which the system automatically allocates the transfers within the fund. Um, and, and that's where, you know, it's a longer-term process, um, but it, it's, it's, it's just how it was built and, and FundView, uh, like I said, I'm not talking to Kevin, I wasn't there. But they had recommended that he not do these things because it was going to skew the system. Um, and in fact, it has skewed the system. And so that's where we're going to get back in and try to build it to where going forward from this year. When, when it, when an entry is made, it, it only hits whatever fund that that was intended to hit from.
Yeah, the thing that, the thing that bothered me about this, that conversation too, is that from what, from what FundView has said. Is that, you know, Kevin said, no, I want it this way and the council has directed me to get it this way and we never did that. We never gave Kevin one bit of direction. He said, no, I got this covered, I got this under control, don't worry about it, we'll have it. And then it was like month after month, it's like, well, trying to get things reconciled, oh, I'm trying to get things reconciled. And then he finds they're finally reconciled and it wasn't reconciled and then he left.
Yeah.
So I have a possible solution I'd like to address. Um, Mike, when you were talking about this, so we're putting into a bit of monthly CPA. Um, and you're saying we're not quite ready there yet, but there is, would be a process for hiring one. So would it make sense that we put it on the next agenda?
Get it going.
And start the process and Deborah's already wrote it on her hand.
Yeah, I, I think this.
I'm glad to take your hat, yes, because I think, I agree, thank you.
Okay, so.
You're still, you get it for better.
Deborah, and what does it say?
It says we need our RFP for accounting and grants for grants.
Okay, so then.
And we need a policy on appreciation.
So the accounting thing that we did, um, I don't know, we just saw papers. Um, the, the, what we did is we took that twelve thousand dollars, we said, okay, it's going to be a thousand dollars a month. Do we, do we go into that line item and put more in and bring in somebody?
We have to do a budget amendment and we have a whole bunch of budget amendments we know we have to do because of exactly what you just referenced.
Oh, yeah, because that's, I'm sorry, we're talking.
So two different time, yeah, two, so right now.
That's a budget amendment, but, and it could be whoever we bring in, we retain.
To do.
On the, on the month-to-month stuff, it's just going to take a front load of several thousand dollars.
And we did put in fifteen thousand versus.
Right, right, it is fifteen thousand, but anyway, so, so, okay, so we, we try to get this cranked up this year, which is.
Yeah, because of the lead time, so what Chris was saying with our people, we have a lead time of like generating that, publishing it. Getting up against hiring, so if we don't get started on that now, we could start the next fiscal year without that accounting. And I just, I don't want to waste any more months, this is, we want to end in fifty years, you know. You know, due, due already with being able to post our budget because we actually need last year's actuals as part of the final budget document. That's required by state law, so like we have got to get to that finish line however way possible. And, um.
Last year's actual or this year's actual?
This year, so, look, the year we're in, right? Those actuals have to be a part of, and it's a projected amount. Because the year's not done when you're publishing it, but it's a projection based on the three first, three quarters, et cetera, whatever. That is a required portion of the. Final budget that gets approved and posted by the city secretary.
Well, we're not, we're not too concerned about being far off on our, our actuals for this year in revenue expenses. Those, those numbers have been plugged in very cleanly. Those numbers exist. If you want to go back to twenty-two, twenty-three, there's a problem.
Well.
But twenty-three, twenty-four, I mean, the current year, because the current year is in pretty good shape from what I've seen.
I'm sorry, I thought you just said that it was a giant mess and that there's a buzz.
The balance, the balance sheet is, balance sheet is.
If we just have it. Know that, yeah, we have a.
So there's no more quoting issues in our actuals anymore.
Oh, well, there probably are, but.
Binance.
They're minor, yeah.
It's nothing, it's nothing, I mean, Mike may say, no, you're crazy, it's a mess. But, and from what I've seen going through the, through the state activities. Um, we're, you know, we're, we're coding things pretty cleanly. Every once in a while, oh, yeah, to probably get over there and we, we've made some of those adjustments, but those numbers are okay. What, what, what Linay is talking about is the balance sheet, which is, which is, uh, look at. The entire history basically and a financial snapshot for today. And that's, that what's showing that, oh, we got, we don't have seven of those dollars, but we can go into those other, and we can go into Texas class, we can go into Texas three, we know how that comes about. And, and there aren't. And, and there aren't, there aren't issues of coding stuff that went in and some things that gotta be cleaned up in order to get the balance sheet in order. But our revenue and expenses are, are pretty clean. I would, I would expect, and what I was gonna, what I was gonna suggest is that. Um, Mike had already said he's got somebody that, that he knows that works with Wimberly and somebody else. Um, that are, that know FunView, that are CPAs. They can come in tomorrow, because it is professional services. We don't have to go up to bid. We can, we can say, you look great, let's go to work. Um, and get started and start getting some of the stuff, working with Mike and James, get some of the stuff cleaned up. So like today, not today, tomorrow, like soon.
And it would be a council directive, so we can't do this in workshop.
You can't, we can't do it in workshop, no, but we're coming out of workshops.
And have to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
And we would need their qualifications in front of us, but.
Right, I mean, we're, we're looking for more stuff. We've got a meeting coming up next week. We can do this, we can do this.
Okay. Uh, back to the item of COZAC. Have parks blown through their COZAC funds or not? With all of the unapproved expenditures that were going on post.
Once, once we have our, our meeting next week, well, we may have that.
Tomorrow.
Well, tomorrow and then the meeting next week. Um, we'd have about two thousand dollars left.
Okay, this is showing thirty and I'm not sure where.
That was what the number was before of.
That was the number that I was giving, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we just.
So they spent all of the money. Beyond what they originally budgeted for accounting for and planned for. Even though they removed an entire park out of it.
Which park was removed?
Uh, all of the, the items to be installed at Augusta were removed.
No, no, a lot of them are still in there.
Okay, but they pivoted to less expensive items and removed the plan for Augusta Park.
It pivoted away by way of the one debt because the other items. Over the period of two to three years from the beginning of, of the actual budget increases price. So that's, that's where the pivot occurred.
And then they got rid of a. A playground.
Little town gun things.
Yeah, but then like added different items that were less expensive. So that should have brought down.
Yeah, but when you look at the difference between the balances between those two, um, the biggest difference in, in, in the price. Was the, the price hike over that two-year period.
Well, the price hike on the playground, just the Creekside Park playground alone was, was pretty significant. And that's where a lot of that money, I did that. Well, but if we've gotta do the playground, we're gonna do the playground. So if we have to sacrifice the deck, then we'll sacrifice the deck.
So COZAC has no money.
I would, yeah, I would take it to zero. There's really nothing left.
Especially for next year, yes.
Well, they are not authorized to spend any money right now on anything, so. Not especially after next year, meaning like if we have to get that cleaned up immediately. In fact, Parks has never offered us this money. If we're really getting that, then that's a both of that.
Well, nobody offers to spend money.
Except for Campbell, yeah. No, actually. Um. Anyway, all right, so I removed COZAC. Now, some of this math, these formulas are gonna be off of this document, so we go and think them up. But because Mike. Is planning to reformat this for us. Um. I'm not gonna mess with that unless y'all are worried about seeing that. I think the biggest one right now is. We don't have a zero, zero budgeted balance because we have an excess. Coming in right here, right? And then we have all these capital improvement projects we're planning. So I think at this point, I'd like to turn it over in this. Where we're at tonight, Mike. Unless y'all have any other. Discussion points that we have.
Um, the only discussion point I would add, is there anything up here that we? When we were going through the previous budget workshop and planning. Kind of skimmed on and said, well, I'm not sure, maybe we ought to cut that back. If we've got sixty-five thousand dollars. To the good down here, there's, is there something that we didn't given up?
Well, if you go to. Tree and parks, so the tree board makes sense because they're getting, they're getting more active and going. Park board got cut from ten to four.
Because their expenses, their events are supposed to be community relations.
That's what I was removing, okay, we moved. So even the tree boards events were going to be in community relations.
No, the tree board events here are, as I said, we recovered two annual events.
Yeah, so, but parks, it's a thing that.
And the four thousand per park is basically spectacular.
Oh, yeah, okay, so that's, okay, we moved, I said, obviously, we moved. Their expenses into there. We bumped it up to ten thousand last year to back COZAC, though.
Yeah, and also we, we just did a random number picking for maintenance. And we kind of.
Oh, yeah, maintenance thing of the playground.
Yeah, there is. But now we, there are. Made parts in the playground, divided, but that's the parts and playground maintenance.
Yeah, so what we did, we broke it for management, okay.
I'm gonna put coverage annual event so we don't screw that up again.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
The green building initiative, we moved down to the rainwater collection. Down below.
Yep, that's right here, which was really cool. That one of the companies that's coming in is they're getting a whole bunch of like discounts and breakings for us. So we ended up going with them and looking pretty good.
I remember what we cut and there was like a big discussion about, which was the legal regarding. Our ordinances. We cut that back trying to balance our budget.
You talking about the code update?
Yes.
And we got thirty grand in there now.
But based on the city attorney's, it was, it was using a number like fifty. Or sixty.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
But if we're looking at ratios, don't we spend a lot? A larger than normal ratio on the legal for the side wasn't.
Spending versus budgeting. I wouldn't go to the parts and say that we normally spend that. No.
Well, we, we did bump it because Denton Navarro raised the raise.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
We don't have, what we were saying is we were looking at a potential, the legal for code update, we have thirty grand in there now.
And, and his recommendation was fifty to sixty.
Yeah, and the comp plan was also kind of skimmed on a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. So I would take that. Ex, excess and move it into those fields. As per simplification. And then. You know, we're gonna come back to this again.
So does anyone have a number? Do y'all agree? Do we?
I'd like to know what, if we spend. Just seems like a lot of money for legal. For the size of our city.
Well, we end up having them. Do a lot of the work that some of us on council have been doing. You know, like.
And then it was pointed out that we shouldn't be doing that. We should leave that to the experts. Um, and so that has more money.
So we have to pay for the experts.
Yeah, so we're, so we've been handing it to them.
And that what other cities do. Yeah.
I already said it's different.
I just like to work at it.
Yeah, I don't mind. I mean, you've worked with both Wimberly and. Here, um, working with Denton Navarro in both cases, is that right?
Yeah, I've, I've, I've had a couple of other firms in, in other cities, but I worked with Denton Navarro and Wimberly, yes.
Yeah, so, um, in your experience then. Um, are, are we out of line in terms of, I mean, we've got. I mean, the, the legal code update, that thirty grand was, is new. That's a special. You know, a special deal.
Oh, that's open.
Should that be entered?
Yeah, it should be.
No, I, I mean, I think every year, uh, i- if, if you want my thoughts on it, every year you're going to spend some money on, on legal updates, so I wouldn't move that into another item. Um, I don't think this, you know, year, it's out of whack because, you know, you do have a lot of codes that, that you guys want to address and really get updated. And so having a larger amount just as one budget year. Uh, sounds pretty congruent. I know when we were in Wimberly, we really wanted to work on our subdivision ordinance. Um, and so we budgeted a, a large amount of money, uh, in that one particular year to have Charlie's firm work on our subdivision ordinance. Um, and so I think it's fine leaving it just the way it is.
Mike, do you remember about what that number was?
I think we spent fifty thousand on the subdivision ordinance and other things that, that year, um, so.
That's what I'm saying, because that's the code we were talking about at the time.
That's what Charlie referenced. He didn't say what city it was.
Yeah. So.
I'm gonna, I think we should put fifty grand here.
And probably.
Then thirty.
Yes, because that's what he just said, and that's what the city attorney is saying it's gonna cost.
Even though we're like smaller city, I guess the ordinance.
Subdivision code, we have subdivision. We probably have more.
I mean, he also, we also just talked about. We also just talked about the idea of if you're losing the municipal court concept, then our code has to get cleaner. Like it has to get fixed.
Well, like you're saying, just the, just the one thing that, that Mike mentioned is the nuisance of payment, you know, strengthen that ordinance. You know, so, I mean, they, I mean, we've been talking for. Four years. About just how crazy our codes are and how, how whack they are and, and we've been, been. Taking little chunks out of them, chunks out of them. And it's like, this is one of those things that just, I think that if you're gonna get it done, you gotta just say, okay, we're gonna bite the bullet and do it. It's. Gonna hurt, but it's gonna be done.
And do it right, so we don't end up in a mess.
Yeah.
Like we, you know, not having any of those weird development loopholes and crap that we've had that have caused so many fights.
And the other thing too, um, and this is just a. Denton Navarro is a much different law firm than Wyomar or Roger or any of those, you know, sort of. Single person, basically. You know, he, I mean, Denton Navarro can say, okay, well, we have a city conundrum staff. Yeah, you know, we're gonna bring them in on this. We have, you know, we have subdivision, uh, and we got experts in this, we're gonna bring them in. You know, so it's. You know, they've got it in-house, so we can, we can actually make some good progress on this. There's also. No, um. Like past pride and ownership. It's not like, oh, well, I, I wrote that ordinance, you know? We're not gonna change that. I wrote it, you know, well, it's.
Yeah.
It's, it was poorly done and needs to be taken. Oh, I think that's a bad idea. So we don't, we don't, this is the right time to do that.
So we're spending a hundred fifty-four thousand, not, we're not, we're leaking, we're not spending that, we're budgeting to fifty thousand dollars for a code update. And then the rest is our normal legal expenses.
Where can you get a hundred fifty-four, though?
I just added fifty, thirty-five, ten, forty-five, or.
There's, there's. Engineering and.
And there's a hundred thousand budgeted for legal in there, yeah. No, there's a hundred thousand budgeted for legal, fifty thousand of that. Is a code update. Uh, you can say a hundred and nine thousand because there's litigation and special cases, but litigation and special cases, we only use if those occur.
Also, but. Did we do, based on the, Mike's recommendation, we touched on this? He said we should probably.
No, it's the prosecutor.
Prosecutor, that's right, thank you.
Um.
It's an eight thousand five.
Okay. I'd also.
We still have forty-five, though.
I think we need to bump the comprehensive plan update.
Yes.
I did talk to, um, on that, I did talk to, uh, Dr. Tarba. About, um, about getting some help. He was, he was positive, but not, oh, I know exactly what to do. So he was. So do you?
But he also made a point that, um, you know, where we thought about, I think he. When lunch, you're saying, uh, a classroom, you don't get the quality if you, you actually hire some people. To do it. So he recommended that we get some special help with that, still.
So.
So.
So bump it.
The original comprehensive plan had about a budget of fifty thousand dollars, and that was who wrote it. Now volunteers wrote it.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm still waiting on that check. I think a bunch of things, fifty thousand dollars for that again right now is relevant. That doesn't mean. It doesn't mean that if we find a cheaper company that. We can't go with that, but I think anything under fifty thousand dollars means we're working with less and best. All right, and so that's, uh, there you got fifteen thousand down here to play with, but if we go to the known new revenue rate, I believe that shall adjust.
Oh, it does.
Our add more in tax rates slightly. So I would need to.
We will not be receiving all that. We won't be receiving all of the three hundred sixty-five.
Right, it would go to three sixty-three, three eighty-three, so I'm gonna make that adjustment so we can just see it go fast. Three six. What was that number, three sixty-three?
Three eighty. Eighty-three is what you said.
It's in our packet, yeah, three sixty-three, three eighty-three, thank you. So scrolling back down, we are at a thirteen thousand dollar overload. At no new revenue rate.
Okay, so to, to what you were saying before, so I think we're, in my opinion, we're in pretty good shape right now. Turn it over to Mike.
Yeah, because see, there might be things that. That makes sense.
Having a little pillow does not make it hurt. And the schedule of, schedule of.
Okay, um. Just one thing I wanted to mention, might not be part of this, but drainage funds. Under capital improvements. Was that for studies?
No, that's that fund that's been sitting there for years.
Park.
Okay, all right.
So we, we've been trying to create a project for it, but all the partners that. Get presented to us are way over it. So we're trying to find a.
That money that we had from the Aurora, did that want?
So it's looking like mostly that money would be used to pay for, since, ex, ex. Excuse me, essentially Freeland Turk to be doing a lot of like, if we have a town hall on drainage, if we, you know, creating those plans. To be able to go out and seek additional funding or plan for funding.
And maybe why I'm mentioning it, Suzanne and I found. What I couldn't find before, twenty-seventeen drainage comprehensive drainage plan.
Yeah.
Which has been completely negated through the roadwork. So it is no longer relevant. Uh, yeah, no, it's, that was what Kate Freeze was originally working off of. That all of those projects got scrapped because they were too expensive.
So that Ford's twenty-seven could also be used for like.
Updating.
Fighting or.
Yeah. It can be used for whatever because when we claimed the money.
Well, actually, this is, this, we can earmark it for drainage, but according to Kevin, because of the amount of, we can use it for anything. But we wanna keep it earmarked for drainage, so we.
Cause that's our next most pressing issue.
Right, yes.
But no, I mean, like, we know where the, the areas from those studies were. That was what was directing Kate Freeze originally. They scaled back what could be done and they, that's what brought that Freeland Turk presentation for Westwood and, and Merk Hollow. And that was next because it was too expensive, so.
Millions.
It's millions. It was a rock and it created.
So what if. Yeah, so we, using old stuff is no longer. Like we, I mean, the drainage plan has to be approached in a different manner.
Uh, I think maybe the INN committee would. Will give them the full study and let the engineers.
Yeah, that's fine. Good point. All right, anything else? In the workshop? All right, if nothing else, we'll come out of the workshop. I've got seven fourteen. And, um, and back into the regular agenda, the other item, discussion, the appropriate action, but the revisions made during the workshop. Um, so this.
I move that council reduce the proposed tax rate to the known new revenue rate.
I second.
All right. Okay, the motion is to reduce the property deck rate to the new revenue. Moved by Mayor for down pines. Seconded by council member Drummers. Um. In further discussion. On paper, please say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
I move that we accept tonight's changes to the proposed budget and direct Mike Bays and Jim Burton to prepare documents. For our next regular council meeting.
I second.
All right, motion is to. Adopt the revisions made during our workshop this evening and direct. Um, uh. It's all dent, Mike Bays and our acting city administrator. um, uh, then it's Mike Bays and our acting city administrator Jim Burton to make changes and bring it back to us at our next regular meeting, that it?
Yes.
Any further discussion, on favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
And Q. And, um, you know, the only announcement will be that we will add a, uh, budget workshop to the next meeting next week.
There, um, we, if we have, okay. In order to be able to have a public hearing on the proposed budget on the eleventh, I have to have the notice that was already due on Friday. And in that notice, it's gonna have, you know, increases, increases, property taxes, discuss that information with all of this public page.
Right.
Um, there's also a requirement that, um, the city secretary has to have the proposed budget fifteen days prior to the public hearing, which that would work. But if y'all waited and had a budget workshop on the twenty-eighth, excuse me, then the notice, we go to the Wimberly, Wimberly New Caper on the thirtieth, it would appear the fifth and for a public hearing on the eleventh, which isn't gonna work, because you have to have ten days between.
That whole schedule shifted the minute we approved the proposed budget last week. That's, that is a self-imposed schedule.
And it all is going on that the tax rates do not exceed that other document.
It's the no new revenue, yeah, so either way, so yes, a new schedule, because if we go to no new revenue rate, it changes the schedule. But also that September eleventh was a self-imposed deadline based on things we were doing. Now we've done something else, so.
Mayor Rascal also is gonna have public hearing for the budget and a public hearing for the tax rate on the same day.
That's what I think they said in the.
So that's the only way by holding to the, I'm sorry, mayor. Um, by holding to this schedule, um, that's the only way that, to follow Mayor Rascal's wishes.
Mike.
That might wish it, that's, is what I.
Oh, I'm sorry, wishes according to all of our training.
It's, it, the training that I remember said you can't set the tax rate on the same meeting, same time you set the budget.
Yes, you have to go to two different meetings.
Right.
Yeah, so, but what I'm saying, Mike, and maybe you can chime in, but seven, September eleventh right now is an arbitrary deadline. And there, we, as long as, like, the deadline, as long as we make the final deadline is what really counts. And we set the deadline and it started the minute we accepted a proposed budget last week, so we couldn't have a public hearing fifteen days within that date, that time period, and we have to have one within thirty days. So what was the date of last week? The fourteenth, right? So, that's it, that's our deadline.
Right.
Correct?
And, and I'm not looking directly at the, the sheet with the no new revenue, but, but yeah, I, I think we can definitely narrow those dates down and I'll get with, with Suzanne, um, and make sure that we're, we're on point. And, yeah, mayor, I, I think you're, you're, I, I've seen cities do it both way, where they, they do pass the tax rate and the budget in the same meeting, as long as you pass your budget first. Um, but, but best practice, you always wanna follow what, what TML is recommending and making sure you're staying on top. So I think, you know, if, if we can accomplish that, then that's, that's always, uh, a good to go. So, um, like I said, I'm not sitting here looking at the sheet, but I, I think if we just use the TML dates, we can definitely get everything, uh, completed in time.
Okay, so if you work with, if you work with Suzanne on that, can, can y'all you know, make sure dates are in order and then, and then provide council, um, with an updated schedule based on having everything done and, and adopted and on the books, you know, September thirtieth?
Yeah.
And remember.
Or, or September thirty?
We're twenty-nine.
Remember, council's already authorized staff to call the public hearing too, so you don't have to come back to council to discuss that again, as long as it's a workable date.
Right.
But I need the information from the documents that you prepare, like that cover page, because that goes to the paper.
That's what he's saying, he's gonna work on.
She and I already talked about these same dates. Last time he was here, last Thursday.
Yes.
Yeah, Suzanne, what I, what I wanna do is since we have, since we have a no new revenue, uh, rate, um, you know, we, we wanna make sure that we get back in and, and kinda look at that. Um, and so, yeah, I'll, I'll loop around with you in the morning if we, if we want, and we can make sure we, we have all the dates that'll work.
So am I gonna have to work with the county again for any of the calculations?
No, I, I think the calculations are fine, they just adopted the no new never, no new revenue rate that was provided, um, on that sheet, so.
And in the future, the calendar is always set by the proposed budget posting, not the asset. That is what starts the clock.
It was in the hours from the last day, usually the last.
Yeah, it's August twenty-eighth.
Right, August twenty-eighth, budget and then.
Suzanne, I do not wish to argue with you anymore about that.
I'm not trying to argue, I'm trying to make sure that we all make it in time.
We are not.
That's what you and Mike are gonna work on tomorrow to make sure that we make it on time. That's, that's it, that's, I mean, he, he, he said he'd loop back to you tomorrow and.
And I just asked the question and then. That's fine.
Should I continue with announcements?
Thank you.
Broker, can I read your hand? Um, so we'll put on the RFP for.
It's not a request for proposals, it's RFQ for accounting.
RFQ.
Right, and that also RFQ for grant?
Yeah, it, it would be a, an RFQ for grants, um, as far as the CPA, you guys don't need to do an RFQ or RFP. What I would do is I would, uh, I would get quotes from, you know, two or three providers that, uh, Jim can, and I can present to you at the next council meeting for you to review those quotes and see what works best. You, you don't have to do an official RFQ or RFP process, since it's a professional service and it's under fifty thousand dollars. Um, and so what we can do is we can just do the, 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 uh, proposals from, come from at least two, um, possibly three providers. And then you guys can select from those and we can tell you what we know about those different providers and, and council can make a decision on who they wanna go with. It's a much quicker process, and then, um, I, I do think that'd be really good, because we can then start having them assist us with the journal entries. And I know there's one, your interest payment that was made, um, on your, 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 your bond, um, the last one that was made actually came out of operating fund and it should have came out of interest and sinking, and so when we, when we do a budget amendment to, to switch that, it'll help kind of those balances that, uh, that you guys were talking about, and so that, that'd be great to have that person on, that, that is that third party and qualified to make those journal entries as quick as we can.
Great, so then the other one, I will attempt, well, I can get it in the next meeting.
What?
Well, the RFQ for grants.
Let's get that on, let's get that on.
Grant, I prefer.
No.
I'll try to.
We, I mean, we, we went through the budget approval process today, um, so if we're adding a budget workshop, check, we can do that. But that's, that's easy, um, we're not really, I mean, we can.
It's not a hurry to do.
It's not, and then as far as looking over the, the proposals from.
That's, yeah.
That's, that's administrative, I mean, it doesn't really have to.
So I'm gonna hold off on the grant management.
I just wanna make sure that, but we've gotta post the budget.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, we have to post, we actually have to post the budget too, but we have to post the agenda. And is there anything that we're adding to the agenda besides budget workshop?
No. And, but he's been bringing up the.
Kirsten changing her items too as well. Her item, we're just working on.
Okay, okay, so.
I already had it.
You guys like the workshop?
Uh, yes, and her.
Okay, well, you had this.
Absolutely.
Correct her, then they have the workshop on there.
Yes, sir.
Um. And then we'll take a, uh, last bug out tomorrow, you send it up to, I'm sorry, it's updated. I would.